Thank you, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session for the City of Casa Grande on this fourth day of November already. Don't forget to vote tomorrow. So tonight, we're going to hear a presentation and discussion related to the proposed east-side wastewater solution and partnership between the City of Casa Grande and Arizona Water. This is on the east side of I-10 for the city. So, Mr. Rains, I'll let you kick that off.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity, and I thought it would be worth the council's time this evening as we talk about the future development on the east side of Interstate 10 to provide a bit of an update on wastewater effluent in general. I think it really establishes a context for some of the direction that we've been transpiring. Obviously, the mayor and council has heard numerous updates on those topics over the course of the last four years, but I thought an update just kind of leading into the dialogue on the east side, and more importantly, talk about some of the policy landscape that is transpiring primarily on the water side, because as everyone knows, we find ourselves in the Penale AMA within a situation with the water model that we've been looking for, not necessarily an immediate current type of a solution for future development, but there are some rulemaking processes that I know the council is aware of that are underway that really ties very nicely into the overall discussion and the potential of the partnership with Arizona Water on the east side.
And Larry, if I can, if I could introduce Fred Schneider. Fred Schneider, wave your hand, Fred, is the president of Arizona Water, so he's here tonight. So if we have some questions, I know he's available to us to answer some questions.
He's here to correct me every time I go afoul of the screen.
There you go.
And so I am going to be attempting to run the Advancer, take notes, and present concurrently. And really, if I can, just kind of, I want to say this, that there's a convergence of all of this that is happening very, very rapidly within our environment. And I recognize that on many occasions, staff is asking council to consider various agreements and/or policy choices in the context that things may be unclear. And we really find ourselves in a couple of scenarios where we don't have all of the answers today, but the lack of moving forward on a number of these projects will certainly hurt us in the long run. And so I believe that the presentation will assist us in following that. There is not, I think it's important to note, that the council will not be taking action on any item this evening. This is really just an update overview. I'll be taking brief pauses at each section so that you can ask any specific questions that you might have, because it really kind of builds the context, and the questions build to the next dialogue that we'll have as we move to the end. So please ask the questions if you're uncertain about any area that I cover. But ultimately, what we're looking for is direction from the council to ensure that staff is on the right page and council's in alignment with the direction that we're going as a staff. So if I can, just spend a very quick minute. And again, I know the mayor and council is very aware of the current wastewater environment that we've been and that we're in today, and overall, the policy that we've been following at the city for a number of years related to our wastewater. And there's a number of moving parts. We've allocated roughly $80-plus million in capital improvements over the course of the last few years towards our wastewater efforts. And so what you'll find is that some of these, there are some expansions that are underway as we speak, and I'll talk very briefly about those here in a second. But our wastewater reclamation facility is currently permitted at a 12 MGD. We're processing just north of 6 million gallons a day at our wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, there's been some current demands with the new arrival of our industrial development. Their flows into our wastewater plant sometimes exceeds many of our residential flows. And so we're trying to stay ahead of that because of the growth we've experienced. We do have one managed recharge facility that we are discharging to. It is, in essence, the Santa Cruz, the north branch of the Santa Cruz Wash. We do have some permitting issues for discharge there, and I'll talk a little more about that. But currently, today, outside of what we are selling in effluent to a few, under a few contracts, we are discharging that effluent into our managed recharge facility and are generating long-term storage credits daily through that discharge. The overall vision of the city a decade ago, and maybe even a bit longer than that up to this point, has essentially been that the City of Casa Grande would operate one facility, one wastewater facility in the city, in essence, run main lines to that facility. And the overall game plan at one point in time is that with the land that we acquired, we could essentially build 50 MGD at the site off of Quartzon Road. We want to talk a little bit about that tonight, obviously, with the east side. And I indicate, and again, this is just for information for everyone, that there are two current wastewater operators within the planning area. And what I mean by that is that on our west side, Global Water is within our planning area, and they are permitted through the 208 process to actually be a provider of wastewater services on the west side of our community. That was an MOU that the city approved probably 15 years ago. Obviously, they've not built anything within our planning area because there's not been any need for that today, but they have continued to make plans to build something on the west side. And in fact, one of the solutions for our Copper Mountain Ranch development, when that moves forward, is that a portion of that development will be served by a wastewater treatment plant on the west side of the community that would be operated by Global Water. So it's not uncommon for us to have other partnerships. That one has not been memorialized other than memorandum of understanding. There's still a number of processes that would be necessary for them to operate within the City of Casa Grande. Mayor and council is very aware of the money that you have allocated, the funding that you've allocated to our wastewater projects in the vision to actually expand our wastewater reclamation facility from 12 to 18 million gallons per day. That project is underway, and there's a lot of technology improvements happening at the plant. But ultimately, when we're done with that, we'll be able to process up to 18 MGD under the permits at that particular site. Most recently, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality approved what is known as a Zipti's discharge permit into the Santa Cruz Wash. And so for the last three years, we've been challenged with what I would consider to be balancing the processing capabilities of the plant with our discharging capabilities. And so we were successful at a permit that would ultimately discharge into our managed recharge facility that was recently approved. And there is a timeline on that, but ultimately, we believe that because we're making the treatment processes improve to an A-plus quality, that 16 million gallons is something that we can rely on, on that north branch. As you know, and I said the Balancing Act, it still does not reach the 18 million, but we have our west side effluent reuse line that is underway as well. That is the line that will run from our plant and actually run on Bianco Road south, and ultimately, to another discharge point at the Santa Cruz Wash itself. I will tell you that when we went through, when we developed the plan and articulated that to the mayor and council, and I know that you heard a couple of updates along the way on that, our thought was at that point in time that that would be more of a reuse line, because we were running it into our industrial area. A number of those industrial businesses that we have in our community were interested in utilizing effluent versus groundwater, and that is still an option today, and we continue to have dialogue with many of those users in that particular area. But ultimately, we will look to finish, we'll complete the line to the Santa Cruz Wash. We'll ultimately look to get an additional discharge permit in that area of 10 MGD. So you'll see that our discharge capability is greater than our processing today, which is a very good thing. And the mayor and council is well aware of the constructed recharge facility that we ultimately are pursuing today. We've asked for funding to actually do the design of a plant that would be roughly 6 million gallons, I believe, a day, that ultimately is adjacent to our wastewater treatment plant. That would become another recharge facility, known as a constructed recharge facility, where we could actually receive long-term storage credits for the recharge at that particular site as well. At the end of the day, the ultimate vision and plan of the staff was to control 100% of that effluent within our city limits. We wanted to keep it here versus running it down washes that exited our boundary. And there's a lot of benefit for that because of the potential use of effluent, both today and in the future. It will bring up an interesting policy discussion that we'll be having in the months to come, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a bit. But, oh, I went backwards, didn't I do want to just, are there any questions on the current conditions and the projects that we have underway related to wastewater? I guess just one additional point that I want to briefly discuss related, because I think it has a huge bearing on the potential of the partnership and building other sites, other wastewater facilities on the east side, is that, as you might imagine, where actually there is, with any recharge facility, as we're generating credits, in order to utilize those credits, you have to recover those credits from an area of hydrologic impact, known as a safe harbor. And one of the things that we seriously considered as a staff when we elected to build the managed, the constructed recharge facility, is that it is pretty much adjacent to our constructed recharge. So we're not really gaining a new safe harbor in this. It will expand our existing safe harbor, but we are not actually placing that. So any of the effluent that would be recovered would have to be pumped to other locations if we were going to use that.
Larry, the difference too is if we put it in Santa Cruz, we don't get 100% of the credit. If we put it in a recharge facility, we get 100% of the credit.
That is a very good point, Mayor. The managed recharge is, we're getting 90% of what we're recharging as a credit. Casa Grande became what I would consider to be a benefactor of that through some statutes that were passed a number of years ago. Typically, if you're running a managed recharge facility, you're not getting the 90%, but in our case, we are. And the constructed recharge that we're working on now, there's a capability for us to get 100% of that recharge. There's some variations to that based on rainfall and just the evaporation and the like. But ultimately, the constructed recharge will generate more credits than the managed site.
Well, that's when we put it in the Santa Cruz, if the Santa Cruz is running, we get zero.
Zero, correct.
So when it runs, and we still have to discharge, all that's lost.
There's no credits being generated at that point.
Right.
If there's any interruptions, for example, when San Carlos irrigation releases the water and it runs to the middle part of our town and across near Quartzon Road into our golf course, we're not getting any credits when they're releasing their irrigation waters as well. So there are some challenges with our managed recharge that ultimately we want to resolve, again, as part of our vision and plan in the future. I do want to, if there's no additional questions on wastewater as we know it today, I do want to talk just very, very briefly of this convergence of water. And as the mayor and council is aware, we currently in Casa Grande are known as, there's a certificated assured water supply that Arizona Water actually is awarded, and any development or subdivision that occurs today requires a certificate of assured water supply, 100-years assured water supply. Everyone is aware that after the model was generated, there have not been any new certificates issued in Penale AMA or in Casa Grande. And so there's been a stakeholder group that's been working, from Penale County, that's been working diligently, primarily led by a number of the water providers and some of the municipalities, to try to find solutions to that water model. One of the options that is really beginning to advance is this concept of an ADOS. And the ADOS concept was a recommendation from the Governor's Water Policy Council, and essentially what it is, an alternative path to assured water supply is the designation. But at the end of the day, what it would do is establish rules to address challenges to some of the water providers in the Penale AMA and maybe even in Maricopa County as well, and the Maricopa AMA, that in pursuing a new 100-year assured supply. They're obviously, in the rulemaking process now, there's a fair amount of discussion that is taking place. We believe that we're headed towards a positive outcome. But essentially, and I certainly don't want to talk about, a whole lot about water here, but I will say that it will be, it can be one of the options for future development in Casa Grande. And effluent is, at least in my opinion, going to play a very key role as a foundational component of any ADOS application. But it will serve as an option to many of the providers in Penale County. If we're successful with the rulemaking, there's been what I would consider to be a tremendous bit of support by Penale stakeholders. I think last we heard, there were 200 or 300 letters of support. And so it still needs to be considered by the council. We're hoping that we have a positive outcome from that. And there's obviously some statutory rulemaking changes that need to take place. But we remain positive on that front.
Larry, if I can add some, a little bit of context there. So Arizona Department of Water has proposed some rules that will allow for a new alternative designated water supply, which could lead or give a path for Arizona Water Company that is not a designated water provider. They rely on cause, the certificates of assured water, which means you have to have it based on a plat of land. This would allow for the expansion of a development without having a cause. So it's a rulemaking committee that then hears from the various state departments. I mean, they handle all kinds of different rules, changes, and they had the, they have the meeting once a month here for the next couple of months, and we have an opportunity to get that rule passed that then would allow for the pathway for Arizona Water Company to then become an alternative designated water provider, which would be huge for us. And it would be huge for Coolidge, be big for Buckeye, Queen Creek, because none of them are designated water provider areas, right? So Epcor out in Santan is not a designated water provider. So all of those companies that are not designated water providers would have a pathway to become a designated water provider. So it's a huge deal. So, sorry.
And certainly will impact our future development in Casa Grande. But I think the important message, again, we talked about the evolving policy environment. This is one of those policies that is still in process. There's still some consideration. There's applications that need to be filed. There's water that needs to be acquired and brought to the region as a physical supply. I bring it up because I think it is a key component to our consideration of anything that's happening on the east side of town, where there's very few certificated developments there. So I want to talk just very briefly on effluent identified as an assured water supply. And we've touched, the mayor and I have touched on really the concept, but effluent could be stored and recovered for use by future development through an ADOS process. Must be recovered within the area of hydrologic impact, safe harbor that we've talked about, which is typically one mile around the recharge site. And agreeing on a long-term effluent use allocation strategy is going to be vitally important. And we are not proposing a policy tonight to this mayor and council. But in essence, at least for my chair, it is something that we are working on as a staff that we're going to begin to introduce to the mayor and council. Effluent is going to become a key to the ADOS process. We see the opportunity to reuse, perhaps on shorter terms. But again, at the end of the day, at least in the staff's opinion, we need to be capitalizing on the effluent for current and future use and growth. So if I can use that as a bit of a springboard or segue to talk about the development plan, and I know in February of 2024, Mr. Schneider made a presentation to the mayor and council on some discussions that were really being facilitated by one particular development, but with some interest by a handful of others that are in that area. And I talked just very briefly a minute ago about the fact that we do have three specific developments that have certificates of assured water supply on our east side. One of the challenges that we have seen on the east side of Interstate 10 is that the infrastructure is lacking. And as an example to that, there was sewer lines that were run to Mission Royale in cooperation with development in the city a number of years ago, when that development, when Mission Royale development transpired and when the Prominant Mall built. But the capacity on those lines are really built for those particular developments. So there's a lot of engineering that goes into the slope of those lines and whatnot, and the size that was ultimately established. And so the idea of the three developments that are adjacent to Mission Royale, simply connecting from a wastewater perspective to the city's line is unlikely because there's not sufficient capacity. When you consider the potential of an ADOS transpiring and the development interests that has transpired on the east side, and really, the primary obstacle has been the access to a water supply. If ADOS opens up, there's likely going to be additional, there's going to be additional interest. I will say that we have seen for the power provider in this area, which is primarily ED2, Electric District Number Two, they have even modified their policies most recently to encourage development on this side. And that is driving a fair amount of interest, particularly by the post-ranch development. I know the mayor and council has considered some entitlements on that particular development recently, and that was part of the driver that really got the City of Casa Grande and Arizona Water around the table to really have some dialogue about the potential of developing a wastewater reclamation or treatment facility at that particular site. And so you have a couple of others that are adjacent that have certificate in the Spring Water Point, the Hacienda Estates, and Phoenix Mart, who has expressed continued interest in infrastructure in this particular region. And so when Arizona Water and the City of Casa Grande begin to have dialogue with these developers, really what the primary interest was, is to go out and ascertain what their flows may be and try to time those. What we're finding is that most development does not want to capitalize infrastructure if they're not going to build tomorrow. And so really, what the concept that Arizona Water came up with that was introduced in February was one that would essentially size a package plant. I'm going to show council a couple of examples of those to meet the immediate demands that might be driven by these developments, but ultimately allow the option to easily expand to meet the demands as development continues. Intuitively, I anticipate that once development occurs out there, and it very likely will be post-ranch, you're going to find these other developers feel like they have an easier path because some of that infrastructure need is going to be there. We're going to have to navigate that, and I say we will be part of the group that has to do that, simply because of the fact that, at least in my mind, all of the infrastructure is going to have to grow as development transpires. And so developers need to be a partner with us in ensuring that we're not oversizing capacity, but that it's there when they need it. And so when we began our discussion, we did meet, Mr. Schneider and I did meet with a number of property owners on the east side, they all, about the idea of a concept of a new wastewater treatment plant on the east side. A number of them expressed interest, but indicated that they would likely be at a future phase as the growth continued. We did have discussions with Penale County during that time as well. As you see, the map that is on this particular screen, that is within our planning area and/or incorporated city limits today. It essentially matches our 208 boundary. But the county had expressed an interest in perhaps citing a regional facility that would allow them to change some of their entitlements. Most of the entitlements that are transpiring in the county today are one acre, which is what is mandatory for a septic system. And so the thought is that if you had a regional system on the east side, you ultimately could reduce the size of those lots and serve it with a wastewater treatment plant. But as the conversation went on, it became clear that, at least today, that we were going to focus within our area and with the potential option in the future that perhaps county area, if it's annexed or like, could have access to one of the proposed sites. And so, and again, these maps are what was introduced in February, but ultimately, Arizona Water would align their 208 planning area to match the city's DMA east of Interstate 10. So it is in essence, the darker orange area would be the area that Arizona Water would be proposing to serve wastewater in this particular region. And there are a number of mechanisms that are necessary for them to do that. First, we would need to do a 208 amendment. The city's in the process of amending ours. Ultimately, we would add language that would allow Arizona Water to serve in this area. And there would be a licensing agreement that would be And there would be a licensing agreement that would be necessary for the between the city of Casa Grande and Arizona Water. That really would drive the the use of the effluent. And then agreements, agreement defines arrangements for wastewater services is outlined here. And and I think what's important, I want to make sure that our residents know this as well, is that the city currently serves Mission Royale in the Promenade Promenade area. I've talked about that. But they are on the east side and there could be a potential, although this plan, at least today, does not suggest that that they're going to continue to be served through the infrastructure that they have. And and but but ultimately, there could be a potential at some point in time where this particular, this entire region could be served by the plants that would be built in that particular area.
Larry, would would it behoove us to carve out the Mission Royale and the Promenade and the 208?
I I don't necessarily know that we'd need to carve it out, Mr. Mayor, because essentially what the 208 amendment does is allows both the city of Casa Grande as well as Arizona Water to be a water, to be the wastewater provider. I I will say that one of the elements that that Mr. Snyder and I have been having discussions about related to a potential partnership with an approach that would build plants on the east side is the issue of a variable of be the differences of having two different rates. The city having a rate and Arizona Water having a rate. And and that is something that we're that we're looking to work through. But at the end of the day, at least at least under the under under the beginning of this process, the thought is is that we would continue to provide Mission Royale and the Promenade with the service through the city plant and treat it there. That's not to say that there wouldn't be a day that that we wouldn't evaluate keeping it on the east side. It just hasn't really been studied too much. And 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 I'm sure Fred will want to make want to make a few comments at the end of this. He may even have a few ideas from his perspective. Just one last thing on the Mission Royale. We did evaluate the idea of it becoming a load, if you will, for at at the start of of a new plant on that side that we would we would serve those particular developments with the east side wastewater treatment plant. But after after reviewing it and having additional dialogue, we elected to essentially keep that on the city's plant.
Will be hard to change the slope on all the pipe, especially wastewater treatment stuff.
Right.
I would think.
And I don't know that we got into that level of technical review, but but Mayor, the point is, the point is certainly well taken.
Yeah, okay.
And and so as we begin to have dialogue with the with the users on the east side and really trying to outline exactly the best course of action, I think that through the analysis that was done and through the discussions with the developers that would be of most interested, in that case being post-ranch, it was it was decided that ultimately that we would we would focus on two facilities. One that would be located on post-ranch land itself and would serve a specific region. It would likely serve the other two developments that are adjacent that have certificates. And then ultimately, at some point, a north, a north facility that would be actually north of the post-ranch site that would that would not only serve the broader region, but would also be cited as the future regional wastewater recharge facility. And at least in my mind, that becomes very key when you begin to consider the ADOS and the like, because you begin to establish a new a new recharge area there with new a new hydrological area, new safe harbor area. And which which at in the end of the at at the end of the day, could potentially open up new development on the east side of the interstate. But I at at the end of the day, the the key to this particular plan was essentially one that would allow for that timing of development and growth and construction of these plants to be built around those. And this particular slide just shows a couple of the examples. Arizona Water has worked very closely with Perk Water. Our city staff has met with them as well. I know our city staff has toured a couple of these particular facilities along with that team. I wanted just to give the mayor and council a concept. What we have found is that cities that are experiencing tremendous growth are beginning to utilize this particular technology and this particular concept to ultimately meet the demands simply based on location. And and so you see, surprise, Goodyear, Buckeye and Red Rock have used that. You can see the example with Red Rock where they've got the Recharge Basin adjacent to it there as well. But these plants ultimately can be, as I said before, can be expanded to meet the current demands. And 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 they can be expanded in increments, I think, as as little as 500,000 gallons a day. Typically, you're looking at about a million gallon facility. I know Arizona Water has done some analysis on on those demands, but but they really are serving some of these communities that are seeing a tremendous amount of growth. If I can, just talk about some of the action items that that are underway. Obviously, Arizona Water, in order for them to operate in the wastewater space, they would need to go before the Corporation Commission and they have filed their application, have been having dialogue with the with the team there. The application is considered, will be considered by the board on November 13, November 13th of this month. The 208, I've talked a little bit about the joint application to allow Arizona Water, some of that happens concurrently. But I can anticipate that the Arizona Corporation Commission would be looking for the city to be supportive of both of these as they consider that item. And then the two items that I talked about that really become council action items, which is a licensing agreement that would happen between the city of Casa Grande and Arizona Water Company and then a potential development agreement between the city of Casa Grande and developer. Because as you might imagine, there's a there's a number of discussions that need to take place. If Arizona Water is capitalizing or they're asking the development community to capitalize this, then we have to evaluate things like our development impact fees, rates and those types of things. But those last two items are items that would need to come back before the council and ultimately get your approval on. Tonight, what I when I had indicated that we were looking for direction is that, you know, based on all of the activity that's been going on and the request from the development community, my plan was to support the CCN application and the 208 amendment and wanted to ensure that we were, as a city, on the same path that the council was supportive of that. And ultimately, understanding that that really I see, at least from my seat, the the potential change in the philosophy of one plant, one region to ultimately perhaps having multiple plants in the community and essentially creating these recharge areas that that can be identified as the safe harbor positions. And as I started my initial comments, there there are still policies that are underway. The development community many times wants want to advance regardless of where we're at with policies that are being made by the state or on water or wastewater. And so I thought this would be a good opportunity to brief the council, update the council on what we've done, what our vision is. I anticipate that we'll reach the 18 MGD plant. We'll we'll get that done in the next 18 months. Ultimately, with the industrial use and the growth that we're seeing in our community, I can see it, you know, the need for us to immediately begin another phase of planning to even expand it greater than that. And there will still be plenty of demands, a number of demands on our existing plant. This just gives us flexibility and options on on the outer skirts of our community, on the east, on the east side with Arizona Water, on the west side with Global Water, and and ultimately opens the door to future development through this ADOS process. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I will pause, take any notes, answer any questions that you might have.
Sir, if I can, I'll take a point of preference here to kind of talk a little bit about this since I've been pretty involved in it. And that if you look at what we have with our wastewater treatment facilities, they're they are they're supposed to pay for themselves, right? So they're enterprise enterprise funds. And so to develop the east side, it would cost us a lot of money and a lot of our taxpayers, a lot of money to develop that east side. And so by potentially privatizing some of the wastewater treatment, it allows us to move forward in advance of what we as a city probably would have done, especially with the smaller package plants put on the east side. It allows for even post-ranch to potential, not potentially, but probably develop. And it also fits nicely with this potential ADOS, the ADOS process that would is going to allow for Arizona Water to actually become a designated water provider, which then would allow for further development on the east side without having to have certificates of assured water, which the east side does not have, other than those three plats of, you know, the one, two and the three that were on the map. Those those have certificates, but that's it. Those are the only three. So I think it makes good sense to to bring in a private partner. It's part of our strategic plan as well. If you remember, the strategic plan did say that we would look at the possibility of private enterprise to take over where we felt it might be more efficient for them to do it. And in this case, you know, we operated not to make money at it anyway. So it's a break even thing for us. So if we if we allow private enterprise to come in, I think it'll allow for more for earlier development than we currently would do as a city. Plus, it would also help support, I think, some of the ADOS and the water rules that are coming down from the state. I think that Arizona Water Company has been a good partner of ours. They have really worked very, very hard, actually, the last five or six years with the city and staff, myself included, to try and kind of build this partnership that I think we we can move forward with. So from my perspective, I think it's a good move. Obviously, you have questions. Please ask.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just before we get into the questions, and I obviously want to make sure that Mr. Snyder has time to make any comments if he'd like. We've been told by the post-ranch developers that they would like to begin to move forward in about the next 18 months. So that talks about the timing, the need for flexibility. Obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. They've gotten their entitlements finalized, but the once they, once they begin to move forward, obviously, the the it it'll be imperative that the utilities are moving forward with their with their development as well. So 18 to 24 months, and I know that that has been changing a little bit. We've been meeting somewhat regularly with the with the developer, but they continue to stay very engaged and optimistic about opening post-ranch up for development.
And how many lots was that, Larry?
Twenty-four. Let me go back. I think it was 2,400, Mayor.
2,400 lots.
2,432.
Yeah, and this doesn't, this doesn't cost our current taxpayers anything. That's that's the, that's, I think, the beauty of this plan is that this is future development paying for future development. Matt?
So a couple of questions. One is, we had a plan for the sewer main to go down Cottonwood Lane at one point. Is that, would that, this be replacing that or would that still?
It was, it was actually scheduled to go down Quartzon.
Of course, okay.
Right, and ultimately serve this east side. There was a, an agreement that was executed between the city of Casa Grande and the East Side Sewer Group is what they referred to themselves. But the property owners within that corridor ultimately serving the Phoenix Mart.
Okay, so this would take the place of all.
Yes.
All of that.
There there would still need to be, obviously, mainly, it was one of the questions that the property owners asked. So I'll, there would still be a need for sewer main infrastructure to transport from those developments or those properties into the way to the wastewater plant.
It might tilt the other way.
It would, it would be different than what was actually designed for that.
Okay, and then, yeah, I don't want to, what Craig said, you know, working a lot with Arizona Water in the last five, 10 years, gotten a lot better than it had been in the past. And I appreciate that. One thing I've talked to some people about the concern would be with the, not a concern, but something we need to do in our agreement is the effluent. Because as we've talked about, a lot of times, it's going to be more and more valuable as we get further down the road. So I just want to be, I mean, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. So how, I don't even know if we're to the point of how that would work yet, but we don't want to give everything away, you know.
Right.
We we want to, but I do agree with, if private industry can do it, let's, you know, let's work with them to do it and let these people pay for their growth instead of putting it on the backs of people who've been here.
Yeah, if I can, Councilmember Herman, and and I'll certainly let Fred address that. I think the plan on the east side has been that any of the effluent that could potentially be utilized would be utilized within Casa Grande. Right, and 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 ultimately, that'd be memorialized into that licensing agreement that I referenced a bit ago.
Right, it wouldn't leave.
Okay, yeah, so it'd stay in our safe harbor area.
Right.
And and be used for the benefit of of that for recharging. Because I think the ADO, yeah, the ADOS is going to have a lot to do with, or that's going to have a lot to do with the ADOS, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Following up on that, so will the city continue to own or manage that effluent? Or will Arizona Water, but then it'll just stay in the in the city? Thank you, Fred.
Councilwoman Fitzgibbons, mayor, council. The plan would be that the effluent would be owned by Arizona Water Company. So we would build the recharge facilities, store the water and then recover that water, that effluent as needed for new development. Our commitment is that all the effluent generated from that facility would be used for development in the Casa Grande proper. That water wouldn't be used for anything else. It came from Casa Grande. It should be used for Casa Grande. But the focus that would be to bolster the water supply for the designation so we can get more certificated or more platted properties. So with more platted properties, we get more effluent, we can plow more properties. So that's considered a renewable supply. So that's the value is to make sure that we can keep the development process going.
And there's been a lot of talk about effluent and making sure, and you brought it up, Larry, as far as making sure that we agree on a long term plan and strategy. So I guess that's the only thing that kind of concerns me a little is, you know, to to give up that effluent. I get it that it's used for Casa Grande, but, you know, you you hear it so much of how critical that is.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not the ones collecting it. It's not our collection system. We didn't pay for the collection system. We're not paying to have it treated like we are today.
Right.
Right, so that truly is ours.
Right.
And so we should be able to do what we want with it. But I think the best that we can expect is that that water stay in the city of Casa Grande. So but it'd still be used then for development.
Right.
So we didn't lose it. So it stays here. The one thing about effluent too, and somewhere down in the future, and there are some rule changes that are coming down from the state, from ADEQ with regard to how that water gets processed. And so those rule changes will make a big difference in terms of how water processors like us and like Arizona Water then can use that water. So eventually, there'll be direct potable reuse. I mean, it's coming. And so when that happens, there'll be a process, another processing plant that takes it to potable stage. And then that water could literally be pumped wherever you want it, because it's new water supply. It doesn't, it's not dictated by a one mile radius. It's not dictated by, because you didn't stick it in the ground. It's potable, direct potable reuse, and it can be piped wherever you need it. And I think ultimately that's.
Casa Grande as well?
Well, but in this agreement, it will not go outside Casa Grande.
It would stay in Casa Grande.
That means that agreement could come up that it could go outside.
But you would have to approve it.
Exactly.
You as a city council.
So.
I mean, you could sell it.
The thought process is though, we're trying to see what's best for Casa Grande. Okay, all right, so I think that's where you're at. And so with what may come down with DOS, there's something could come up where it's rejected outward. Casa Grande does not have the control of it. That's where I'm at.
No, that's not.
Okay, okay, Larry, and so I just wanted to make sure that we understand that.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely understand. And and I think it's important to note that when I talk about an allocation policy of the effluent, it's what we're generating today. I do anticipate that we are going to move into a state where most developers, when they come to the community to develop, they're going to ask, they're going to be asking the city for the Porsche to control the effluent. Their, what's being generated out of their development and ensuring that it goes back to their development to ensure that they could perhaps find a path to continue development. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so so that is the, at least in my mind, that's if, that that is likely what we're going to be faced with in the next couple of years.
Yeah, we're and we're a long way from that, but.
Right.
But I mean, if you think about, if we got to 18 million gallons output per day, I calculated it. if we got to 18 million gallons output per day, I calculated it, 6 million gallons today, that if we, if we reprocess that effluent, we could build another 12,000 homes and supply water to those homes on the 6 million gallons per day that we create today. Now, it's going to cost you some money to process it to potable state, but it would support a lot of homes. So the point is that we want to manage that, right, Larry? We want to manage that with Arizona Water's help and our help. We don't want to cost our citizens a lot of money to be able to do that. And we can build out the east side with the help of Arizona Water and not put it on the backs of the rest of the city.
So Mayor, I wanted to go back to a point that you talked about the rates, and Larry talked about the concerns with Mission Royale there. And, you know, and, you know, we're break even, you know, we're government, you know, city, but it's a private company. So, you know, of course, you get, you know, your concerns that there might be some drastic, you know, differences in the rates. And so in the development agreement, can we manage that at all, to see if it can stay?
It's going to be Corporation Commission.
I think, I think there's a couple, I think there's a couple of elements that the city can do to manage that. Councilmember Fitzgibbons, the first is, and in fact, we are headed towards an analysis of our rates within our wastewater treatment plant, our wastewater fund, this fiscal year. So it's important for everyone to recognize that many of the capital infrastructure projects that we've been, that we've started these last few years have been funded with construction sales tax. It's not been funded through our wastewater fund. And so essentially, we can, we need to do a rate analysis to really take a gauge of where our rates are comparatively to what the overall rates are in the community. It is something that Mr. Snyder and I have talked about, and essentially, what you try to avoid is a scenario where you have a road, if you will, and you've got resident A on this side paying X, and you've got resident B paying Y, right? And so there, we will have to look at it much differently than we have in the past of being the only provider in the community, in my mind. I don't know that you ever land on an exact rate, but I suspect that you can get very close because of the processes that are required, right? The, under, for municipalities, it requires the mayor and council's approval. There is a process that you have to go through for any rate, for any effluent rate, or wastewater rate. For a private entity, they're going to the Corporation Commission. They're having to justify it there as well. But I do think that, working together, that we can likely get very close to those rates, so that it's not, it's not, for example, what we may see between us and Maricopa today, where residents there are paying $95 a month, right? And so, you know, essentially, it's, it really, it's going to require us to look at it and probably take a process that we, that we've not taken before, but I do think it can be managed.
There's a lot of work being done. So I guess the question is, I mean, does anybody have any issues with Larry supporting their process to go forward?
No.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I had another.
Go ahead, Matt.
Looking at this, so we're at about 12 million gallons a day. This is...
We're at six right now.
Six, yeah, going up to 12. This is only 1.6 million a day. I mean, do you anticipate it growing that much more faster? I remember in the last presentation, I remember that you had the nice, the pictures of the package plants, and the more modern ones that don't have, that work really well, and I appreciate that. I mean, how big would those plants be? And is that enough? You know, I mean?
So I build out, when we planned that orange area, the reason we developed two wastewater facilities is that each facility is going to be built between 12 and 15 MGD apiece. So if you look at the city's facility, we'd be looking at about two of those facilities to take care of that entire area. And that's a projection of build out. Who knows when that happens, but that's probably on the high side, but we're rather planning on the high side and have a little extra space if we ever needed it.
That's not a lot of... You just got to start somewhere, right?
There's nothing out there right now.
Zero right now.
What is the initial, what is the initial package plant?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of...
I believe the first phase is 250,000 gallons is the first phase. It's about half of post ranch. So the plan was to build half of post ranch in the first phase, expand it for the third, and then that's about the time that spring water point, Hussey, and the state's ready, and that would be like phase three.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. That's...
Making a model so we can build it as we go.
A question, because you asked if we approved the process. So what, what does that mean? So I know you have the steps in here. So if we approve the process, and then we get to the licensing and the development agreement, and if there's any issues at that point?
We're okay with him, this piece right there.
Supporting, supporting the partnership at the CC, at the Arizona Corporation Commission and the joint application for the 208.
Right.
Those are the first two processes in getting them this, that territory.
Okay, to start it, and then we move into these next two with the city.
That's right.
Yep. Because none of this is done.
Right.
If something does not get, if either the CCN or the 208 is not supported, then ultimately, there's not a need for a licensing agreement.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll stay adjourned until 7 o'clock, and we'll start the regular...